Okay, Madam Mayor, you're live.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have all of you here in the chambers and welcome Karen on Zoom. We, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary?
Mayor, you're live.
Thank you. I'd like to. Oh, so Fiona, I couldn't figure, I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out why I was hearing it the second time.
And it's muted, too. I don't know why it happened, so sorry about that.
It's my thing to do pecuniary interest first and then it end up. Because in case, yeah, just it's the wrong order on there. Okay, we have an addendum tonight, so I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Fair, that Counsel approved the addenda to the agenda for Monday, November the 9th, 2020 being closed session item number one, CEO recruitment verbal update.
Any questions? If not, Diane, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook.
Still muted, Karen.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? It was the other order on our agenda, but I agree with Diane, it's important you know what the addenda is before, then you'll have to know whether you have any conflict there. Counselor Rowe?
Yes, thank you. Bylaw 2533 due to proximity.
Bylaw, thank you. That's all the declaration of pecuniary interest. I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion concerning the minutes.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Council dated Monday, October the 26th, adopted.
All the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Of correspondence concerning action, have you a motion for that or do we need a discussion? You've got a motion?
Madam Mayor, I have prepared something.
Okay, if you would read the motion, that'll give us something to.
Wish it changed?
Yeah, if we want to change it in any way.
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, where his correspondence was sent to Mark Fisher, Director of Education, Thames Valley District School Board in October of 2019, advising that Central Elgin Council was interested in the concept of a reciprocal agreement between the Thames Valley District School Board and the municipality of Central Elgin for the use of the Port Stanley Arena and Community Centre and the Belmont Arena and Community Centre. And where his follow-up correspondence has been received from Mark Fisher, Director of Education for the Thames Valley District School Board, advising that the Thames Valley District School Board looks forward to working with Central Elgin to explore the merits of such an agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that Counsel direct staff and its solicitor to proceed with revisiting and negotiating a reciprocal agreement between the parties to govern the use of Central Elgin Arena facilities by Central Elgin Schools and Central Elgin School facilities being used by the municipality.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? It, I couldn't understand why they hadn't got it, you know, brought it forward. They kept denying they had not received the letter. I had to get the letter from Mr. Leach and forward it to our trustees, and then they brought it up again and said, yes, a letter went. As you can see, it went over a year ago saying we wanted to do this. So all they did previously was negotiate the insurance aspect. So that's been done. But we genuinely want the children in our schools to be able to use the arenas when they're free in the afternoons and when the students can use them and they're not already booked for something else. And that's, we will not likely use the school facilities hardly ever. It would only be if we were having something, say, in Port Stanley Community Hall and it was booked, then we'd have to have it in the gym at the school or some such thing, or same in Belmont. But any, yes, Dennis?
Um, yeah, that's just, this has been a long time in the process, too. It's not something that one year old. I believe it's a lot longer than one year that we've been seeking this. I remember this discussion five, six years ago, so it's nothing new at all. So.
No, it's been going on.
Thank you.
It's been going on a long time. And in with the old Eldon County, we had the reciprocal agreement and they used them back and forth. And I know at the meetings that Tom and I had been over there at where the county meets with the school board. And I brought it up then and they said, oh, you know, we were told your lawyer didn't want that. Anyway. It's a, I think it's important and we need to get it done. So any other questions on the motion? If not, Diane, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, correspondence for information. Any that you want brought out of there? Ms. Counselor Fair, yes?
Yes, I would, I would like the AMCTO, the bill 218, that we would very, very strongly support it, or I would even go as far as to say maybe we should be doing a letter or something of our own. I think that's very, very, very important and I agree with their position.
So that we want to keep the nomination day in the end of July, not in September. It certainly gives staff a much longer time, you know, to get everything ready for an election. So that's very important, that, that aspect of it. Counselor Rowe?
I would second those motion.
Okay. Bill is moving it and Colleen is seconding. Any further discussion on that one?
Mayor Martin, can I just note that we, staff ourselves have discussed, we were actually able to have an extra advanced poll in 2018. We felt that we had caught some of the snowbirds prior to leaving south because we were able to have an extra poll because we were, an advanced poll because we were ready because of the increased timeframe. So we felt it was very beneficial.
Now, do we want to do the others together? We haven't read any motion yet, or do you want to do that one and then the others?
Just excluding on the main motion, if you will.
Okay, go ahead with the main motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Clarify if I could, Deputy Clerks, which did you prefer, the way it was or the way we're suggesting it go back to?
No, sorry. From an employee or a municipal standpoint, we would like the extra time. We would like it to remain in July.
And that's what this, that's what our motion is for, is supporting this bill so that it stays in July. It is confusing. I agree. I had to read it a couple of times, too.
Agree, no.
Okay. All right, would you read the general motion concerning correspondence?
Moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that correspondence items number one through, sorry, number one through number three, excluding number two, be received as information.
It's not, it's number three.
Sorry, excluding number three, number two, one and two, excluding number three, be received and filed. Okay?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. And now the motion concerning three.
The motion reads, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that correspondence received from AMCTO and the City of Hamilton respecting Bill 218, supporting Ontario's Recovery Elections Acts 2020 and the concerns with proposal to move nomination day back to September from July be endorsed.
I think that's why it was confusing because we're endorsing that it not be moved, that we not support that bill. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and reports now from Chief Administrative Officer concerning the BIA vacancies. Do you have a motion for that?
I do, Madam Mayor. To read it?
Certainly.
Motion reads, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that Counsel approved the appointment of Dustin Allen, Kyle Carapanta, and Michelle Graham to fill the three vacancies on the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management effective immediately as per report CEO 2320.
Thank you. Any questions concerning that? If not, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbs?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we're going to be having a presentation by Aaron Dooling, our procurement specialist. And he's going to explain to us with a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe is now attached, to explain procurement to us so that we have a clearer understanding of proper procurement. So, welcome, Aaron.
Thanks for having me. Okay, so I, I'm guessing I just have to hit share screen here and.
That should be it.
To go. Okay, so. And. Okay, so is everyone able to see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, perfect. So again, thanks for having me tonight. I'll try and keep this brief. But I'll need maybe 10 minutes, maybe 15, and then if you do have questions, by all means, I'll do my best to answer those. So what I'm hoping to do tonight is kind of just walk everyone through what it is that we do in procurement and hopefully answer some of the why we do things the way we do them, and then kind of try and explain how that impacts you as counsel and counselors. And hopefully to provide a little bit of additional clarity on, just on in general, what we do. So to start off, what is procurement or what is municipal procurement? So our goal is to acquire, is to acquire the goods and services at the right price, the right quantity, and at the right time. We're wanting to try and ensure that the process is fair, open, and transparent. And this is really the main guiding principle behind everything that we do is fairness, openness, transparency. And why we want to do that is it really shows that we're accountable to the general public and to the taxpayers. But it's also to demonstrate to those who do want to do business with the municipality and who do want to bid on projects that we're, we're open to this and we make sure that we're, everyone's on an even playing field. So the more that we can demonstrate this, the higher level of confidence that there is, not just from the general public and taxpayers, but also from bidders. Bidders can feel confident that they're going to definitely get a fair shake anytime they submit a bid to us. So the other part of what it is that we do is we're bound to follow a significant amount of things that get set down either through legislation and laws and case law, but then statutes, pretty much, there's four or five major trade agreements that we have to follow. And then that sort of leads down into our internal policies and our procedures, which is where our bylaw comes into place. Move to the next one here. So, so why do we do what we do? So like I just mentioned, we have a lot of external forces, which are mostly trade agreements and laws and case law that kind of dictate to us why we have to do these sort of things. So with these things being set down, the one that sort of impacts us the most is the Canada Free Trade Agreement, so the successor to the Agreement on Internal Trade. With those changes, there was an update to the procurement chapter and we're seeing some changes in process related to that. And then also this newer agreement that we have with Europe, the Comprehensive Economic Trade Agreement. There are other ones, but they're not, they don't seem to impact us as much when it comes to process. The one thing, though, that they do all share is that there's, there's a chapter on procurement and that details and explains how and when these agreements end up being applicable to us and how we have to treat our bid process when we get into that. So this is where we start talking about, and I tend to use the term best practice quite a bit. So a lot of our best practices are, are things that come from these procurement chapters from trade agreements. And then this isn't something that's unique to Central Elgin. It's something that you'll see quite a bit from almost every municipality. We all have similar ways of doing things. And it's, it's mostly because we're, we're trying to follow these best practices. And even though a trade agreement isn't necessarily required for every single bid we issue, we try and follow these, these sort of higher level agreements because it really makes sure that we have a standard process so that we're trying to avoid mistakes and errors. And when we start getting into process errors within procurement, that's really when we can, we can start getting into trouble. So from, from down from a trade agreement, we start to look at what comes from the Municipal Act. And the Municipal Act says that if you're operating any kind of procurement and you receive government funds, you have to have some sort of a policy or some sort of a bylaw. So we have our bylaw, which we use. And that, and that's really our guidance. And that's where we say we're going to do this and this is how we're going to go about it. And we, we don't have it up on the website yet, but that's something that I would like to get posted so that if anyone wants to look at it, it's, it's available, it's there. So then, yeah, like I said, our bylaw does have a number of minimum requirements that come from the province. And there's also a guideline that comes from the province. And this is where they sort of say, here's an overarching framework. And your process should include some of this stuff. And again, every municipality treats it a little bit different, whether it's a dollar value threshold or how they go about a certain, a certain process. But we, we try and, we are working within that kind of a framework. And again, why we're trying to work within a framework like that is, is simply to try and be as close to one type of process, and that's really for consistency. We're developing this assuming the highest, that highest level of compliance, which tends to come from trade agreements and laws and legislation. And then really, as a counselor, where do you fit into this whole process? So generally speaking, the role of counsel is to provide overarching leadership and guidance to procurement rather than being involved in the process. And this is usually accomplished by reviewing and approving that bylaw. If we're going to make, if we were to make major changes to our processes, bringing that forward in a report so that we're, we're, again, we're publicly kind of saying this is what we do, this is how we're going to do it. And we're keeping everything as transparent as we possibly can. So that's sort of some of the overarching stuff. So what I'm hoping to do with the next few slides is to just, just really give a base of what goes into the sort of a knowledge base of procurement. Because there's, there's a number of little things that I, that are not really well-known that I think are valuable. So the first, so the first part. And I'll do my best not to put you to sleep with this part, but procurement law is a little bit different than what you would typically expect and what you might understand or know from a, from a contractual standpoint. So within, within Canadian common law, a typical contract requires three parts, which is your offer, your acceptance, and then your consideration. So the offer being, I want someone to come and cut my grass and I've written down on this piece of paper when I would like you to do it and how much I'm willing to pay you. Someone comes along, they say, I will accept this. I accept your offer. And then the consideration portion is the, the exchange of something of value. So in most cases, this would be, I'll pay you $5 in order to do it. So that's the consideration portion. And that's where a typical contract would be formed. Procurement law is a little bit different in that this contract is kind of pulled apart a little bit. So when we're talking about contract A and contract B, we're, we're, we're kind of stepping away from what is really understood. And that's because there was some case law back in the early 80s, which the, the long, the long and short of it, of it is that it made it to the Supreme Court and it brought about this question of a duty of fairness. So this duty of fairness is that when a bid is issued, as a municipality, we owe anyone who submits a bid a duty of fairness. And that duty of fairness is also owed back to us as well by them. So anytime that a, a contract A is formed, anytime that we receive a valid bid, so a valid bid being that they've, they have submitted it on time. And if there's anything that we're asking for them, like a bid deposit, they've included that. So as soon as contract, contract A is automatically formed with everyone who submits a bid. And that's where it does, where it's, it's different than a typical contract. So when we issue a tender, if we have six bids and they all come in, we form contract A with all of the bidders. Now, with that, because it's a legally binding contract, it's treated as, as a, as a contract under common law. So a lot of municipalities, when you do hear about issues related to tenders, it's almost always because something has happened during this contract A phase where the municipality maybe didn't follow their, their process exactly to the letter and someone is calling them out on it. Now, we get into, or sorry, I should maybe step back. So what happens when someone submits a bid and they don't, and they, they make a mistake or something, do they still have those abilities to seek sort of remedy from the municipality under contract A? And the answer is no, because in a formal, a binding contract hasn't been formed. So if a bid's been disqualified, they, that contractor wouldn't be able to pursue sort of any kind of a legal matter. And when we get into contract B, contract B is what we, what most people would typically consider a contract. And that's the, that's when you, we only form it with whoever the, the lowest price is on, if it's on a tender or the highest score, if it's, if it's on an RFP. Okay, so next. So I wanted to just, just really, really briefly pull this directly from our bylaw. And I apologize for the, the small print. It was hard to get it to, to fit. But this is, this is appendix one from the bylaw. And this sets down the bare minimum of what we're going to do when it comes to procurement. And, and how we're going to go about that, where we're going to get those bids from, and whether or not there's a necessity to report to counsel. So this is, this is pulled straight from the bylaw. And it's more of just as a, this is our bare minimum of what we'll do. So then when we get into more informal and formal type bids, the next slide is, is going to be a little bit more helpful than here because it kind of discusses the, where something would kind of fit. So typically, informal bids end up being lower dollar value or very, very simple products, things that are more of a one-off and things that we would consider routine, routine purchases. And that actually makes up a significant portion of what we spend. So a lot of these ones don't come through procurement. It's just at the staff level. And, and a lot of these end up falling under what we would consider allowable for sole sourcing. Now, even though it's falling under the ability to sole source, we're still encouraging staff to go out and get quotes, even though, even if they don't have to, we're still encouraging more than just the bare minimum. When we get into more formal bids, we're looking at things like tenders, which would be considered more of a leveraged product or strategic products and bottleneck items, which would typically be an RFP. And that's because there's this higher level of either risk value or complexity or some combination of all of those. And then this chart is kind of, kind of the way when we sit down with staff and say, okay, what is it that you need? It's going to typically fall into one of these four categories. So as I mentioned, the, this bottom left corner is the routine daily stuff and we allow staff to do this, this type procurement on their own. When you start getting into the other columns and, and into the other parts of this, of this chart, you're looking at a lot of, a lot of different stuff. So we would typically consider leveraged products to be things where we were trying to achieve economies of scale. So from a good standpoint, that could be something like paper or office supplies, anything that, any, even vehicles could be, could be considered a leveraged product. We would consider most of our civil tenders that, that go for roadwork, they would be considered a leveraged product as well. And, and then once we get into these, these top two boxes, so when we're looking at bottleneck items, a good example of what a bottleneck item would be is something that's either really highly complex or very, very simple or a very basic item that's hard to find. So when you think of something that's really hard to find right now, N95 masks are next to impossible to find. So that would be considered a bottleneck item. So we're lucky that we, there's not a lot of stuff that we, or things that we buy that fall into this bottleneck category. And when we do know of things that are going to end up being in a bottleneck or that could be in a bottleneck, we either try and buy a little bit more, or if it's long lead times or order early, we're usually trying to do the best that we can to avoid having stockouts on, on this type of stuff or doing the best we can within the market. Like I know because of COVID, seeing emails from other procurement departments at other municipalities emailing, asking if people have anything that they can, they can sell or do they have a supplier. So because of COVID, there is a lot of stuff that is falling into this bottleneck category. Okay, and then the last one is the strategic products, which are usually high value and risky. And this, RFPs are almost, like requests for proposals are almost always going to fall into this. And it's, it's more because we're trying to determine best value. So highly complex construction projects could fall into this. If we needed to replace a major component at the, the water treatment facility, you're looking at something that has to be designed that's hundreds of thousands of dollars and that takes a long time. So those are just the different examples. And this is kind of the, the conversation that we have with staff when someone says, I need something. And I'll get into the, the whole process on, on the slide, two slides from now. So then I think I've kind of, I've already hinted a little bit at this. Sort of the difference of between a request for tender and a request for proposal. So with tenders, we're really sticking to standard specifications and drawings. And we've, we've, we're very prescriptive on what a tender is. So because we've, we have standard specifications or drawings, the, for lack of a better term, evaluation criteria of a tender is, is purely price. And that's because we're not asking anyone to do anything beyond, give us exactly what we're asking for. So for us, that would, what would, would be what we would consider an apples to apples comparison. So we're going up to someone and we're potentially saying, I want a 10 by 10 square building and I want you to build it out of wood and I want it to have a pitched roof with black shingles and I want you to paint it yellow. I want you to finish it in two weeks. And this is exactly what I want. I'm not interested in anything else. Now with, with a proposal, we're getting into a lot more nuance and we're, we're getting less about price and more about what's going. Price and more about what's going to be, um, quote unquote, the best va- value. So. We're typically issuing RFPs when we have an end goal in mind, or we don't fully know what we want. We, we would give them a scope of work and say that we. We, we have a rough idea of what we want this to be in the end. We have a, an end goal. Less of a, in, instead of having a fully, fully formed spec. So when we do that, we're asking bidders to come back and tell us the best way that they think. They can be creative and apply their expertise to a project. And we're asking for them to also include. If they have done something similar to our scope of work and where they did it and do their staff have this level of, of uh. Expertise as well. So. This is where proposals become more of an apples to oranges. Comparison, because we're not using the same level of measurement and there's no context to actually compare an RFP. Uh, to another RFP. Um, so when we do that, met those measurements, we're, we're looking at. How are they gonna deliver it? Previous experience? How long will it take? What's the material they're gonna use? So this is where we could say we want something that's being built. Uh, to a certain environmental standard, or uh, we want it to be lead certified or, or, or any number of qualitative. Uh, evaluation that we can assign values. Uh, along with price to, to come up with what we would consider best value. So as an example, if we go back to the, I want a ten by ten building in an R, RFP, we would go out to the market and we would say. I need a hundred square foot space with a roof. And that would be as much as we prescribe. And maybe we give them some more information and we say, I want it to be built to a, a specific standard or. This is where we can, we can. Say, we don't know exactly what we want, but we want some, we know some of the basics of what we want. And then we, we, we leave that to the bidders to put their best foot forward. Okay, so. From a, from a process standpoint, the, the nine items on here are, are pretty much. What happens anytime a tender or a proposal need to go out. This is the process that we work through. The item number four with a tender, we don't really do because it, it's down to price. So this is more. Uh, about what we do with a proposal, but uh, because uh, numbers four, six, seven and nine have a little bit of additional detail. Um, once I get through this slide, I'm gonna work through a little bit of that as well. With just a little bit, a little bit more, more detail. So typically, someone comes to purchasing and says, I have a need, help me. And then we'll sit down and we'll have a discussion and we'll go back to that. Um, price slash risk matrix. Um, from a few slides before, and we'll start working through some of that and some of the questions. To determine the best way we're gonna go about it. From there, either we already have a scope of work because we've already issued something similar and we just need to maybe make some tweaks. Uh, maybe we've never done anything like this before. And when it's something like that. A lot of municipalities have already done something similar. So we'll usually reach out and see if we can find something from another municipality. If we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we're, we're not going to. Um, and what we'll usually do is we'll try and come up with some sort of a scope that best fits our needs. And maybe take something from what the other municipalities have maybe done in the past. Um, from there, we, we, we would post our bid. And this is one of the items that. Sorry, I skipped one. I skipped the evaluation criteria. Sorry, let me go back. So to try and, and, and standardize and simplify things on RFPs. Um, we definitely limit the number of categories in the non-price evaluation. And I'll, I'll detail that out. On the next slide a little bit more. Um, back to what I, I started mentioning is, well. We'll advertise and post our bids publicly. So. This is actually something that, that does come directly from trade agreement. It's. Uh, any government agency that is issuing a bid over a hundred thousand dollars. Has to publicly post it somewhere. So for us, we use the Ontario Public Buyers Association. Website, which a lot of contractors will look at. And then we also use our, our, um, our. Bits and tenders where we, it gets posted publicly to their website as well as to ours. And then we have a contractor list that's. I, I'm not even sure how big it is, but it's several thousand. Uh, several thousand contractors who depending on what we're looking to. Um, to post, we'll get to actually see, they'll get a notice saying there's a bid posted by Central Ogden, you may be interested. Um, so from there, we go through our, 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 our bid process. Uh, our tender process or proposal process, we close the bid and evaluate it. If it's a tender, that evaluation is just the lowest compliant price. If it's. If it's a, a proposal, we'll, we'll take the time to go through and, and evaluate. Those non-price things. Once we get our, we get our, our recommendation for award ready, we bring that to council. For recommendation. Once. That recommendation is approved, we go through, we award to the highest scoring bidder or the lowest price. And then. Number nine, which is provide debriefs to those who requested. That's typically uh, only done with. Uh, proposals. So. Point number four was where we, we talk about developing this criteria. So we, it's a weighted value out of a hundred. We don't want more than four or five qualitative categories. And the reason behind that is, is the more you get in there, the less. Important each category becomes because it's only, you can only have a hundred percent. So if you, if you start adding more in there. You start to dilute the, uh, the value of the more important categories. And then the last one is always price. Um, price is always gonna have a, a place. Within the evaluation. Okay, sorry, I lost my, I lost my mouse. Okay, there we go. So this is an example of what, this is, I, I pulled directly from a template. Uh, for, for an RFP. So. This is something that all, anyone who wants to bid on a central Ogden proposal, this is something that they would see. So up here, you're seeing, here's how we're going to score. Here's the weighting. So you can see where the more important categories are. And then for each of these individually. Um, numbered items, we try and include some details. So the reason why we do. Why we, we ask or why we, we give them this, these bullet points and, and whatnot is. If we, the more information we're able to give someone who's interested in bidding, the higher quality of the bid we're gonna get. The better quality of the bid, the better value in the end it's going to be for, for us as a municipality. So each one of those items will get a detailed list of bullet points. And then with those bullet points, those actually help inform scores. So when we actually get into the evaluation of bids. Um, those bullet points are what I usually ask the individual scorers. To use as a baseline of, did this bid meet our requirements? Did it exceed our requirements? So there, where are the areas of this thing can, this bid could do better? So. Once we get into the evaluation. Each evaluator is given a review package and that review package consists of anything that we, we issued. Out to the bidders, which is our RFP, any addendums that we issued. Um, if there was a, attachments to those. And then they're also gonna get a. A guideline, which is just a general sort of overarching document that I like to use. And I like to give that out because not everybody's done proposals. And. Especially if you're, if it's something that you're new to, it can be a little bit intimidating to, to not know how to score something. Um, so we, we, we wanna try and give them a, a little bit of an idea. It does include some do's and don'ts. It includes. How to score each category, uh, just very briefly. And then how to fill out your score sheets. And then of course, all of the submissions that need to be reviewed. Um, we want everyone to score these, these proposals individually on their own. We don't, we'll, everyone will come together after they've individually scored. But it's important for everyone to be able to look at these with their own eyes. And then when we sit down as a group. Uh, uh, the group will sit down and, and decide, do we need to adjust scores? And the, the goal is, is to come to a consensus so that we're. We're building buy-in for the eventual. Uh, the eventual highest scored bid. Um, so we tabulate all of this on a, on a. Uh, pre-populated uh, Excel sheet that does all of the math for us. So it's, it's a matter of just putting numbers in. It does all of the calculating for us, right down to how we score pricing. And then the bidder with the highest score is, is given. Is recommended for award. Um, okay, so this is, this is more about when we, we make our recommendations with our report. So. Typically, most of the projects tend to not generate a whole lot of. Uh, uh, discussion or, or questions, but uh, where. Questions are coming up. And in the odd case that there are questions, ideally. These should be addressed prior to meeting with council. Um, and, and the reason being that some of the information that's maybe being asked isn't necessarily something that would. Be a part of public disclosure, um, or it may not necessarily be in an appropriate venue at council to discuss. So. Uh, this is where if a report has been, in, has been sent to continue as counselors. Um, we're hoping to address all of these questions ahead of time. So that if, if, if there is something missing from the report, that we can go back and we can correct it and we can put that information in there. And then bring it to council with fleshed out the way that, um, to the, to, sorry, to the satisfaction of council. Um, if, if we're, if we're still at a bit of a stalemate, then we would have to keep having these conversations until, um, everybody was comfortable. And then this kind of leads into the next part, which is. Can council provide an alternate recommendation on procurement? And the, the long and short answer really is no. And it's sort of, as I mentioned earlier, the, the role of council is to provide this overarching guidance and leadership. And once we're bringing a, a project to council for a recommendation, the options would be to approve a report or request more information. And like I just mentioned, we're trying to address all of these, these questions ahead of time. Uh, so it can either be included in the report or it can be discussed as to why it wouldn't be included in our report. So in the event that council were to, uh, choose to not approve a project. Or to cancel a tender or make an alternate recommendation. That's when we start running into. Um, some issues where we could end up being, being brought into litigation because. Back with this, the, the, the contract A slide. We're, we're owing a duty of fairness to everyone who's entered into contract A. And if it were a tender. And the recommendation was to not award to the lowest compliant bidder. They would, they would be able to, to bring legal action against us. So, um, we're opening ourselves up. Um, there's a number of, there's a number of examples of case law where something like this has happened. And I have a list of resources available for, for you after this is done. If there's any additional reading that, um. That you would like to do. Um, so we, we've started to move the conversation a little bit more towards. Uh, disclosure and, and, and what we, what we talk about and why we talk about it. Uh, and the last, so this is the last thing that we would do with a bidder. So. Earlier on, I mentioned that there's sort of an outlaw, a framework and a guideline that's provided by the province. And within that, there's the. Broader public sector guidelines. And this is something that as a municipality, we're not required to follow every single one of them. But we choose to follow a significant number of them. And that's just because again, it's a best practice kind of thing that. It could end up becoming a requirement and it's better to just. Hold ourselves a little bit higher than what the bare minimums would be and to try and enact this. So. Anyone, anyone who submits a bid to us is able to ask for a debrief on their bid. And the way. Each municipality does it. Is very, very, very different. So the province tells us that we have to give debriefs, but they don't tell us how we have to go about it. So. We tend to try and give them as much information as we can without getting into these sort of. Uh, disclosure issues. And we definitely wanna give them as much as we can. And the reason being is. If they, the better, more feedback we can give them, hopefully the next time around, they'll submit an even better submission. It's also helpful with bidders when they're maybe a little bit upset. And they're, they're not quite so happy. We're usually able to explain a lot to them. And, and by the end of the debrief, they're usually. In a little bit of a better mood, maybe not happy that they didn't win, but at least they understand. They're where they sort of fall into. Into the process. So one of the things that. Us, along with a lot of other municipalities, is we don't provide rank. In relation to other bids and we don't provide scores. And this is one of those areas that. We don't provide rank and we don't provide scores because it tends to lead to argument. And the purpose of debriefs is not to debate where, where you scored and where you ranked. It's, it's to, it's to give that feedback. The intent of an RFP is to score bids based on their own merit and not in relation to the quality of, of a, uh, of another submission. So. A little bit further into, into what we can and what we won't disclose. So. So our goal is to disclose as much as we can. And. We, we do disclose quite a bit. So, um. It's, it's basically to make sure that everyone's aware of exactly what our process is and, and to help ensure high quality bids. We basically say, this is how we're gonna score it. And if we're going to do this exact process and. If you follow this, then you have a decent chance of, of, um. Of, of, of winning. So it, where some municipalities have gotten into trouble in the past. It's when you say you're going to do A, but then you go and you do B. And that's when a bidder will call someone out and, and say, no, that's not what you told me you were gonna do. Um, so. Again, so there's, we're, it's this constant push and pull of. If the goal is fairness and openness and transparency, yet we're telling a bitter story, I can't disclose that. And then we're also coming back to council and we're saying, we, we can't provide that information in a report. Like where they just don't seem to go together if we're trying to do this. So I, I, this was a, a survey that was done by the Ontario Public Buyers Association. And the completed survey had an eighty-five percent response where municipalities are not disclosing scoring. And not disclosing pricing within RFP reports. And then I've also spoken with the five other municipalities. And they don't include any of that either. So when you see an RFP report from us, we're following a very, very similar process to pretty much everyone else out there. Um, and again, the question always comes back to why, why are we doing it this way? So it's, it's, it's universally, not, sorry, maybe universally is the wrong word, but it's, it's commonly accepted by. Uh, most municipalities that providing costs and scoring without providing any kind of a context. Um, to bidders, to a bidder's confidential solution. It doesn't add to our transparency. It just creates confusion. Um, so when we're doing these debriefs, it's an attempt to give them that feedback while keeping confidentiality. Um, and again, the, the question is why? And it's. It's to ensure that bidder's sensitive or confidential information is protected. And in most cases. Um, if a bidder knew that their, their trade secrets or process or anything. Uh, important was being disclosed, we would never receive bids. And for a bidder, it, it's the, the risk outweighs the rewards. Um, from a legislative standpoint, um, AMP FIPPA protects a lot of this information. Um, and in a number of different areas with regards to what is publicly disseminated, either through a council report, through a debriefing. Or other, uh, available information. So with that said, we do advise potential bidders within our documents that. We follow all legislation. And even though you're telling us that something is marked as confidential, it could still be disclosed under AMP FIPPA rules. Okay, so there's a lot in, info on this, on this one slide. So I won't, I won't read. The, the whole thing out, but this is the, the basis of how disclosure is determined. And this is, this is directly quoted from, from AMP FIPPA. And anything that you would see within here is typically what, um, we would consider. Falls within the range of, of what is submitted as part of a proposal. So if someone decided that they didn't like something, they would send us a freedom of information request. Uh, we, I, it would be looked at, it would be reviewed. And then we would typically. If they were asking for anything that fell on this. If our determination was that it fell in there, we would, we would decline it. And if they still wanted to push it. They would. They would then have to go to the Information and Privacy Commissioner. So. If it does go that far. We're now looking at. A, a, a three-part test. For disclosure. So in order for dis, for something to be disclosed. You would have to answer no to one of these three items. Here. So if you can answer yes to all three of those, then it would not be disclosed. If any one of those, the answer is no, then it would be. It would be disclosed. And, and. When they're looking at disclosure, they're looking at each individual item. It's not an overarching, yes, we would release this whole thing. It would be. Does each of these items or any of these items meet it? And if the answer is no to any of it, then yes, it would. It would. It would be disclosed. So. If we're looping back. Sorry. Sorry, I think I skipped a slide there, but that's okay. So if we loop back to where. Counsel is involved with, with some of this, this disclosure stuff. We're, we're looking for that leadership and that guidance and that. Most of the stuff that is in an RFP is, is more of a staff level. Matter and not typically something that's of interest to council. And, and there's a number of reasons for this. And so. If the role of council is to guide, then the role of staff would be to implement the recommendations of council and, and. When counselor or counselors. Involve, get involved on the operational side of an RFP. It can definitely open up council or. Counselors to unwanted questions. And it, and it could become an issue of public perception. In extreme examples like this is usually when you start hearing about, about scandals. You don't use, luckily you don't hear about too many of them, but this is usually. When you start hearing about it. Being aware via report usually ensures councils brief to what's going on with the process while still ensuring that. There isn't. Any council involvement. Obviously, in some circumstances, we're definitely going to want to be bringing info to council. If it's something that's politically sensitive, or if it's something that would be deemed by senior management to be of a nature that could impact council. The, the other reason is, is it. From the literature that's available surrounding elected officials in procurement. The, the overarching. Piece of advice is to keep distance. And. Stay on that high level of guidance. Versus involvement because they're, when looking at it, there's a, a very distinct difference between guiding something and being involved in something. Okay. So next. So just to sort of wrap up, this is any, this is everything that we would disclose. So this is all of the stuff that we include in our bid documents. Anything that we would post to our public site. And anything that would be located in a council report. Okay, questions? And that took a little bit longer than planned. Sorry about that.
It wasn't quite the ten to fifteen minutes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Questions for Aaron.
If I didn't put you all to sleep first.
Counselor Fair.
Not, not really a question. This arose when. I was concerned about there were potentially thirteen bidders. And it would have been nice, we'll just explain to that point that there were thirteen bidders and it was the first part of the process. Where you would definitely not put all the pricing there. Because it was the first part of the process and the pricing at that point was not the sole determining factor. It would have. Hinged on a lot of other criteria and a lot of other standards that would have had to be met. So I can understand that because you, you wouldn't. You wouldn't disclose the price of all thirteen when many of them were not even in the bidding. So, so I understand that. I just, at that, at the point when I asked the question, I just couldn't understand why it was just. Almost said it was none of our business and, and that was what, what got me pushing more. But I fully understand now that this is one part of the beginning process for a request for proposal. I understand now why all the pricing was not given at that level because for the most part. Counsel would, would not even have been involved in, in those early stages of the process until we get to the final proposals. Of the two or three that are ultimately accepted. So, so I appreciate your presentation. I understand completely now what. The reasoning was behind not releasing those numbers and I'm quite satisfied with your explanation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks.
One question for Aaron. You mentioned there that it's important if we have a question to ask the question before the meeting. And I, I agree with. Chain of command. What's the best approach? I'd like to start. Personally, I asked Dawn if it's all right and then, you know. Go down through the Director of Finance and then eventually down to, to Aaron. What is a proper procedures? I don't want to be. Understand what I mean? I want to just pick the phone up, call Aaron. I want to make sure I'm following proper procedures. An email perhaps, or, or where should I start? What would you suggest?
Dawn. I, I certainly don't have a problem with you reaching out to. To Aaron to ask the question. If it's through an email, it'd be helpful if you did copy myself and Ramona as the directors so that we're aware of the question as well. But. I, I think you could approach the. Another procurement officer. In that kind of circumstance.
Thank you. Cause there is a fairly short turnaround from Thursday night till Monday night and people are busy, but it. I wanted to make sure that we appear in progress. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Aaron? Comments? If not, thank you very much, Aaron. We very much appreciate that. And it seems to have helped clear up. At least Bill's concerns that he'd had before and make it clearer to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And again, apologies for being a little long-winded there.
All right, we are now moving on to the. Monthly alarm report FS fourteen twenty. Would you read the motion, please, Diane?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Row that report FS fourteen twenty monthly alarm activities report for October of twenty twenty. Need this information.
Any questions? Keith McDonough must think we hardly know he exists at times. We never ask him any questions. No questions? Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now our Director of Asset Management and Development Services, the first report. On the sanitary sewer servicing cost recovery for Larry Hill and High Street. And. At this one, I did ask several questions. I know that Counsel Row also emailed questions concerning some of this. So I'm going to ask Mr. Perrin, if he would, explain. The two types of. Fees and they each have a separate bylaw and, and how, especially how the second. Community use one comes into play.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to share my screen here if that's okay. And. I, I promise you, I will be no more than ten minutes. So this is the map of the, that was appended to the report. So. First and foremost, there are two types of charges. The first one is the charge or the cost to recover. The expense for the installation of the sewers themselves. So. This map that is up on the, the, on your screen now, there's a blue line that represents the sewers that. Were installed that we are recovering the cost for. So. You'll note that there are sewers also throughout the development, Lanning's Development to the South. Those costs are not. Included in this report and are not requiring existing residents to contribute any funds towards. The, the area that's highlighted in orange is the catchment area that. Provides sewage to the Larry Street sanitary sewer as well as Hill and High Street. For the Larry Street sewer, there's twenty-six residences. Existing homes that contribute sanitary flow. To the, the Larry Street sanitary sewer. And there are a hundred ninety, sorry, a hundred and seventy-one new residences. In the Lanning's Development that will contribute sanitary sewage that Larry Street sewer. With respect to the, the Hill Street sewer, there are. Seven, sorry, fourteen existing residences. So there's seven on Hill Street and seven on High Street. And then there's twenty-five new homes that are part of the development that these homes actually front High Street and Hill Street. So when we look at the cost apportionment for those sewers. It was based on the, the number of, of residences, whether existing or new, that will be contributing. Sewage to those, to those sewers. With respect to High Street. That's at the top end of, of the sewer that we're, or sewer run that we're talking about. There's seven existing residences. And eleven new residents. That will contribute sewage to that, that Hill Street or sorry, High Street sanitary sewer.
Mr. Perrin, if I could just interrupt just for a second. I'm assuming the, the existing ones will be paying these fees, but the developer will be paying the one for the new ones?
Yeah. So as far as process, Madam Mayor, right now the developer has paid all costs. So he has paid the contractor for the installation of the sewers as well as. The, the consulting engineer for the design and project management. And construction inspection. So. To date, all costs have been borne by the developer. This is looking at. The municipality's proportionate share that we would be responsible for, for our existing residents. Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. For Larry Street, the municipalities. And when I say municipality, I'm, I'm, I mean, the, the, the existing residents proportionate share. The, the cost of that work is fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty-three cents. And I want to stress. That. Sorry, my apologies, sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six, forty-five. And I want to stress to counsel that, that. The cost that I'm quoting is for the sanitary sewer installation. As well as for the. Services to the property line and the restoration. Above the sanitary sewer. Not including the roadway. But the, the topsoil and sod in the boulevard over top of the sanitary PDCs. So the cost for the Larry Street sewer is sixty thousand, three twenty-six. For the Hill Street sewer. It's sixty-six thousand, six oh seven. And for the High Street sewer, it's forty-seven thousand, nine fourteen, twenty-six. In addition to those construction costs, there is the cost of engineering. And project management that. Is required for the sanitary sewers and that is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. The municipality will be. Paying the developer for these, these costs. As well, we would pay the GST or sorry, the HST on those, those costs as well. The municipality, though, by default, does recover some of the HST. Back from the provincial and federal governments. So the actual HST component that is not recoverable from upper levels of government. Equates to thirty-five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Therefore, the twenty-six existing residents are. Going to be required to. Pay two hundred and six thousand, oh seventy-seven. And when you split that evenly between the twenty-six residents. The cost per property for existing residents is seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and four cents. So that is the cost to install. The sanitary sewer on Larry Hill and High Street. With a, with a drain connection or a personal drain connection up to the property line. In the, in the past, the municipality has offered that. Those costs can be debentured on property taxes over ten years. In order. To, or council committed back in, in November of twenty nineteen that. No one would be assessed costs until they connect to the sanitary sewer. So with respect to debenturing. Ideally, the municipality would only issue a debenture once. So what staff are recommending and subject to council approval is that. If a property owner connected prior to June first of twenty twenty-one. Then they'd be afforded the, the opportunity to venture the project or the cost. On their taxes over a ten-year period. With one payment annually. If they chose to connect after June first, twenty twenty-one. Then they would not be afforded the opportunity to debenture it on their taxes because administratively. The finance department would be in a position where they would have to issue a, a long-term debenture for one property. So that's the first charge. The second charge is a charge that is equal to the municipality's development charge. And a development charge is a charge imposed. On new development to allow for a municipality to recover costs for growth-related capital works. In this case, sanitary sewage, those growth-related capital projects. Include, but are not. Limited to the major ones are the new wastewater plants. Port Stanley. As well as the pump station fifty-one upgrade. That's the main pumping station across from the arena. And pump station fifty-two, which is down by the lift bridge. When a municipality constructs projects similar to these. Typically, these types of works are oversized to be able to handle. Future growth. So there's additional capacity in those. Those types of projects when they're constructed. And the municipality typically frontends those costs and recovers back the growth-related capital through the DC charge. That growth capacity demand can either happen as a result of a new house. Or the connection of an existing house that is not currently serviced by wastewater. So. The houses that we're talking about are currently serviced by septic. Private septic. Those landowners have paid no revenue into the wastewater system at all. So we would. Suggest to council that they should be treated the same as a new house. Being constructed as they are taking capacity. For wastewater treatment out of the system. And if the municipality doesn't charge them a charge equal to the development charge. Then we're not recovering our costs back. And the only way to recover the cost back would be to add that, that, that cost. Onto the existing customers to be covered through water or wastewater rates. So based on that, staff would suggest that these residents should be paying the exact same as a new home. Because they are taking, taking advantage of. A, a new system that is available to them that they have not paid into. The current charge for. Wastewater in Central Oregon is nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and fourteen cents. So staff would suggest that that is the, the charge that. We impose for the growth-related capital. Like the wastewater plant and, and the pumping stations. And typically this ninety-seven, forty-one, the, this charge. Is not able to be debentured and is payable at the time of building permit. So when you look at the cost to install the sanitary sewers as well as the growth-related capital. Charge that, that staff are recommending. The total cost to a resident based on where charges sit right now is seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Just another note. Madam Mayor, that there's twenty-six homes and as of today, there are nine permits that have been issued. for the connection to the sanitary sewer. So we're at, you know, a little better than thirty, or thirty percent of, or one-third of the, the properties that are serviced by the sanitary sewers have already connected or are in the process of connecting. So that's, that's my report, and I can answer any questions if, if council wishes.
Thank you. Council, questions? Council fair.
Not so much a question, but when I, when I was looking at all of this, I was, of course, comparing it to Eastwood in the area where we had our sewers done. And I see that it's very competitive. Ours started out at about nineteen thousand, two hundred and with government grants, it came down substantially. But this one, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think, I think because this is fragmented, it's not a one big project itself. So I don't think that they would qualify for any kind of government subsidies. And I, I just thought it was quite, quite competitive and also it's cheaper than a full septic system would be.
Through you, Madam Mayor, currently, there's no grant programs for projects such as this. So councillor Fair is correct. It's, it's, there, there's no government subsidy. So it's a hundred percent of the, of the cost based on their proportionate share of the sewers that were installed.
Thank you. And I, I assume this was split equally, Mr. Perrin. It has nothing to do with the size of their lot or any such thing?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, that's correct. So all the existing, actually, everyone pays the same based on the connection. So whether, so for example, the, the existing lots in, on Larry Emery, sorry, Larry Hill and High Street, they're much larger than the, the lots in the new subdivision. They're, the new subdivision is paying their, the, the same, same cost as what, what the existing residences are.
Council crevets.
Question I have, if one of these properties in this, the paint area never hook onto the sanitary sewer, the cost is borne by the municipality forever. Why, is there any way of recovering the cost of the main line back to the developer? Because this development would never have happened if they didn't run these lines into the new development area. That's the only issue I have, and I don't know, have the answer for that.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the, with respect to the existing homes, also included in staff's report, that will also be in the bylaw that council considers will be a requirement for a landowner to connect in the event that their septic system fails or that they need to expand or upgrade it. So if they, if an existing residence adds on to their, their home and that triggers an increase in flow based on the building code, then at that point in time, they would, they would be required to connect. And a, a septic system does not last forever.
No, they don't. Councillor Fair and then Deputy Mayor Marks.
Through the mayor, to Lloyd. Wouldn't, wouldn't, would, would it not be prudent to also modify that to say if there's a change in ownership, then, then connection should happen at that point? I would, I would think that would, would make good sense on a change in ownership, that it should also be a requirement to connect.
Maybe I'll, I'll ask Mr. Leach to hop in here, but I'm not sure the municipality would be able to impose that. I, I don't necessarily, from a legal standpoint, I, I don't necessarily disagree that that's a good idea. I can tell you that one of our first, the actual very first landowner that contacted the municipality probably wished that condition was in because they purchased the, the home, and I think they were in maybe a week, and the septic system failed. So they were after us to be able to connect even prior to having all the sewer in the ground. So, but maybe Mr. Leach can speak to that.
Go ahead, Mr. Leach. Madam Mayor, to councillor Fair, I would suggest if council wished to pursue that, that we would have to seek some legal advice to do so. On, on the surface, I think, I think there could be some legal concerns with doing so, as Mr. Perrin indicated. But if council wanted to explore that option, then we could request Mr. Gibson's advice on that point.
Go ahead.
One other point, Madam Mayor, that I did want to stress too, that if someone decides not to connect up now, but they decide to connect up in ten years, the amounts that Mr. Perrin is quoting are all indexed to the construction cost index so that it's going to go up and up and up every, you know, every year. So that will be recovering. You know, in ten years' time, twenty, thirty dollars, not twenty, twenty dollars.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
I just noticed that residents of three forty-six High Street have sent an email in with several questions. Have they been satisfied or they've got answers to the questions?
Mr. Perrin?
We believe we've addressed the, the questions in the report, or that in, in the report and the subsequent bylaw.
Thank you.
And I believe I spoke to that individual at least on two occasions as well to try to address their concerns.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns about this? I was glad to learn what the, the second charge was about and how that was done and, and why, because I, the first charge is for the infrastructure, that's clearly evident. It was the, I, the idea that they are actually using capacity that we paid for with the idea that development charges would cover that, and they're taking some of that capacity away. And that's why, if they hook up, that, that, that's why that is required. Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, as far as the charge in that second charge, just for clarification, in terms of the Eastwood subdivision, both charges were actually incorporated into one charge. It was a, a total of the two components. The actual breakdown of the cost of the services installed, less the impact of the grant, plus the development charge that was in effect at that time.
Councillor Crevets?
And just one other question. Is there a letter or some sort of information going out to each of the property owners in this catchment area explaining in detail or even a, a nice explanation on what the charges are for and that they can be added to the taxes over a ten-year period? Is there anything going out to the residents in this area?
Perrin?
Through you, Madam Mayor, councillor Crevets. Yes, so there would be a, a letter going out to each individual residence with, with some explanation behind the cost as well as a copy of the draft bylaw, advising them of a date that the bylaw will be considered by council. So the charge is not put in place until council passes the necessary bylaw. And at this point, we're suggesting that could be done on December the fourteenth.
Any other questions? Councillor Fair?
Just, just back to my idea about if there was a change in ownership, would it, would it jeopardize or, or, or extend for too long a period approval on this bylaw if we did get legal opinion to see if we could possibly make that another condition of the sewers that, that if there's a change in ownership, they would have to connect?
Mr. Leach, would you see that extending then? Go ahead.
I guess the short answer is there would be some extension because I think the motion tonight is to move forward with the giving of notice as required. So, you know, that would happen immediately. If we had to go to the, the solicitor, then there'd be at least two weeks if he was able to provide an opinion before council could receive that information back. So it would be a minimum of two weeks' extension. It could, it could be longer.
Then I guess I would withdraw that.
Would you like to read the motion then? Oh, you don't have a mover or a second or?
It's, it's in prepared based on the report. It's verbatim to the report.
Councillor Crevets?
I'll move it.
Councillor Rose seconds?
Motion reads, moved by councillor Crevets, seconded by councillor Row, that port AMDS sanitary sewer servicing cost recovery, Larry Street, Hill Street and High Street, we received this information. And that council support utilizing its powers under Part twelve, Section three ninety-one-one of the Municipal Act two thousand and one and impose a sanitary connection charge to seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and four cents to the affected property owners on Larry Hill and High Streets. And that council direct that each new connection to the sanitary sewer system will be required to pay a charge equal to the development charge for sanitary sewage, which is in place at the time the connection is made. And that council confirm that residents will not be required to pay said sanitary sewer connection charge until such time as a resident decides to connect to the sanitary sewer fronting their property. And that council confirm that a resident can debenture the cost of the sanitary sewer connection charge over a ten-year period if they connect to the sanitary sewer prior to June the first of twenty twenty-one. And that council confirm that in the event of a failure or required expansion to a private septic system on one of the properties that front the newly constructed sanitary sewer on Larry Hill and High Streets, the property will be required to connect to the sanitary sewer. And that council direct staff to give notice of a public meeting accompanied by the draft bylaw, which imposes the charge to each affected resident. And further, that council direct staff to give notice of council's intention to pass the subject bylaw at their meeting dated Monday, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Other questions? Not, would you call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Perrin, again, we're looking at the Harbor Secondary Plan flood uprush study. Do you want to speak to it before we do the motion, or is it self-explanatory in the report?
I can speak briefly to it. So council at their April twenty-seventh meeting approved hiring the services of Zuzak Inc. to provide flood mapping or flood uprush mapping to the Port Stanley Harbor lands. They have since completed their fieldwork and, and provided a draft report. Through the review of that report by both Central Oregon staff, Central Oregon planning staff and the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority staff, there was some question with respect to the proposed mapping because there, there is an area along the actual channel of the harbor. So along the west side of the east headland where mapping was not provided. And what we're asking for is more modeling and detail that shows where that flood line will be when you consider the high water levels in Lake Erie combined with flood uprush from the south, southwest winds, combined with riverine flooding from upstream on Kettle Creek. We are working with Mr. Riggs, who has done some modeling of that wind and wave action in the harbor previously to take that information and have Mr. Zuzak put that into his model and come up with a line. What we want to make sure is that right now, the, the lands and the amount of development along the we'll say the west side of the extension of Main Street, so across the parking lot, the asphalt parking lot that is on the east headland, adjacent to the harbor, that whatever development happens there is not going to be affected by a combination of high water levels in Lake Erie, as well as the, the surge that happens when the winds are out of the south southwest. And we have a heavy rainfall event whereby we have riverine flooding in Kettle Creek to make sure that any new development is not impacted by that scenario. So that's what this, this project is, is for, the, the scope of work as well as the, the estimated cost. As far as timing, we're hoping to have this back in a fairly timely fashion within a couple of weeks because it's this information that is informing the secondary planning process for the Harbor Secondary lands as well. So we're trying to get that cleaned up.
Questions from council? Seeing none, if you have the motion?
Certainly. Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by deputy mayor Marks. DS twenty-eight, twenty, Port Stanley Harbor Secondary Plan lands flood uprush, we received this information. And further, that council approve engaging Zuzak Inc. to undertake on the Port Stanley Harbor Secondary Plan area flood uprush study in the amount of ten thousand dollars exclusive of HST.
Any questions? Got, yes, councillor.
So, so now that would make that the study as opposed to a fifty-six thousand to make it a sixty-six thousand dollar study in total. Is that correct?
Is that correct, Mr. Perrin?
Yes, that's correct. And, and actually, when council reviewed and awarded this project in April of twenty twenty, we looked at doing it in two phases. So the Harbor lands and then the lands to the west on, on Little Beach, or sorry, on Main Beach and out to Erie Rest Beach. All that work has already been done. So Mr. Zuzak was able to, to complete that in a fairly timely fashion economically. So we will be below the, the fifty-six thousand that that was originally thought of.
And with the ten added, or you mean fifty, the fifty-six won't be quite fifty-six, but the ten is?
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's correct. The fifty-six won't be fifty-six and the, the ten added. So we, we will be below the, the budget that was originally thought of for the two-phase project. And then we add the ten thousand and we're, we have a, a call with Mr. Zuzak tomorrow to see if there's a way that we can even get that ten thousand dollars down more.
Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And carries?
Thank you. Looking at bylaws now?
Madam Mayor, separated out by law twenty-five, thirty-three, as councillor Row has declared.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, first motion reads, moved by councillor Row, seconded by councillor Fair, that bylaws twenty-five, thirty-two and twenty-five, thirty-four be taken collectively.
Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries? Motion on those bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that bylaws twenty-five, thirty-two and twenty-five, thirty-four be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries? And last, last motion on those bylaws, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Row, that bylaws twenty-five, thirty-two and twenty-five, thirty-four be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And now they want the councillor to declare?
Motion reads, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-five, thirty-three be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevets?
Affirmative.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Win?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries? And the last motion on that bylaw, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Fair, that bylaw 2533 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote?
Council Cook? Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevitz?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Don't believe there's any public notice that I'm aware of. Is there any resolution? No one has a resolution or notice of resolution coming. Under new business, I'm, yes.
I just wonder if Mr. McDonough or Mr. Parent could give an update on the Port Stanley Fire Hall, the progress of it. Had a few questions and inquiries about it, so if I could get an update on that, please?
Certainly. I'm sure that they'd love to tell you. Mr. McDonough, would you like to give us an update on what's happening at the fire hall?
Sure. And Lloyd can jump in when he's, if he's anything there he wants to. So last week, we, we poured the footings. That was done. Walls are to go up for the foundation this week. And we feel that we're going to put the, the project on hold for, for the winter season just because materials we're waiting for are not going to be here till, till 2021 anyway. And the general contractor has advised us, he feels better if we hold off on pouring the floor until the new weather, the weather in the spring warmer or so. But it's, it's coming along nicely. We're, we're pretty pleased. It's, it's been a challenge up to this point just to the, the, the type of building we're building. It's, it's been, the engineers have had some struggles with that because it's a new structure. It's not something, it's a steel and concrete building. So, but no, we're, we're moving along nicely now. So, I mean, Lloyd can jump in there and maybe add a few things to that as well.
Mr. Parent?
Nothing more to, to, to really say, you know, only to maybe reaffirm what Chief McDonough said. This is a complex building, being that it's, it is constructed out of the CLT wood timber. It's combined with a post-disaster building as well. So it is over-engineered, we'll say, to, to deal with seismic conditions and wind uplift and those types of things. It's intended that, you know, it's not, it's not going to matter what type of weather events are thrown at it, snow loading, wind events, seismic activity, that building will stay there. So when you go by and if you've had the opportunity to look at the foundations, they are oversized. There's a lot of reinforcing steel in them and the, the foundational walls are going to be the same. So it has been a bit of a challenge to get the shop drawings reviewed and approved and all the engineering disciplines satisfied with what's being constructed. So we are there, we are progressing forward, but we're not, we're not as far down the path as, as staff would like to see us, but we are making headway now, so.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much for that information.
Thank you. Any other new business till we go to the one listed on there? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, just to bring the council's attention, County of Elgin doing a couple of committees, one, the Connectivity Committee, and there's chance to comment, there's surveys out there. They'd love to hear from residents of Elgin County, their troubles with broadband internet, et cetera. So please take the time or encourage your neighbors, et cetera, to participate in it. And the other one is environment. You can probably speak to it, but there's surveys as well and they're looking for input.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the Environment Committee haven't met as often yet. They've just met, had finally elected their chair and, and met last week. But they have a lot of excellent suggestions from the new members. They're a very diverse group of members from throughout and had a lot of ideas, looking through the strategic plan and the various different aspects and how it would apply. So, yeah, they will be looking probably more, I don't think the, the surveys, there is one out yet, but it will be, there will be one. Please, I certainly, I did the Connectivity one to see. Problem was I was on the county cell phone to do it. And it does ask you to go to a certain site and it tells you what your upload and download speed is. So I'd probably use my home laptop, quite a lot different. Any other new business before we look at December meetings? Not, Mr. Leach, would you like to sort of walk us through what you're planning or hoping?
So I guess the question was around need for another regular meeting in December. The fourth Monday would be after Christmas. This fight would be shut down. There is a possibility of doing a regular meeting on the 21st, but we learned that planning staff aren't available for that particular day. It may be possible to deal with the planning matters on the first regular meeting in December, which would be the 14th. But we think, given, you know, the number of things happening, that we may be looking at a number of special meetings to, you know, deal with matters, you know, such as budget. We're surveying on that. There's some other committees trying to move forward with some work that may have some needs for special meetings, like the Heritage Conservation District Study, the Water and Wastewater Study. So staff will be reaching out to council members to check availability for some of those meetings that may not be on the 14th, the regular meeting date, but late November, early, early December.
Okay, so, so like, planning can do it on the 14th, that certainly, is there enough time then to get some of the things through that? Mr. Leach?
I think there is. We're sort of maybe blessed, if I can use that word, because we've got a fifth Monday in November. So that helps, you know, there's three weeks in between our last regular meeting in November and the first regular meeting in December.
Right. And that, that gives us the full, the length of time we have to give notice.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, so, and we've already been surveyed about time for probably possible dates for budget meetings, and I think everyone pretty much has responded to that. I don't, at least I saw a response from quite a few of you as to your availability on November 30th or December 7th. So those will be both days probably or one?
I, I guess that's a question maybe for council. You know, traditionally with the main budget, the main municipal budget, council has done it over two meetings. Whether council wishes to do that approach or just plan to do it on the, the first opportunity November 30th, and only if council feels it's necessary to have a second meeting, then that second meeting could be on the 7th if that was council's desire. It's really what amount of time you think you need. This time, the, the budget format is going to be basically the same format that was introduced to, to council earlier in the year. So there's no new format to learn for this particular budget.
And that we will receive that information in advance of the meeting, correct? So that we can look through it? Yes. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'm fine with one meeting with the option if we feel necessary.
So it'd be best to do it on the 30th so that we have the 7th then? And, and the only one was, Council Win and myself had something from nine to 10 approximately. So we're available, say by 10:15 even.
So I can say that Ms. Nordeman has, has worked to get the budget documents out to senior staff to prepare the budget. So they're now out of senior staff and, you know, they're working on their, their budgets. I think one department even has its budget back into her so that we should be able to provide it to council with, you know, adequate time to take a look at it before the November 30th meeting.
Very good. How long would we likely book that meeting for to start with? I'm just thinking if, if with, because we're not available till 10 or 10, 10:30, would we book through the lunchtime or would we wait to start till 1:00 or what are your thoughts?
Again, I think we're sort of at whatever council's wishes are. If council wishes and, you know, we do a format similar to this, it may be possible to have lunch brought in or we can take a lunch break and, and people can go to wherever and resume after lunch.
Your thoughts? Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'd rather get going and I know the county brought us a bagged lunch one day and we just kind of continued on and.
And all we had to have was the warden's permission to eat in this room. Gave it.
I would.
We wouldn't be in this room, correct, Mr. Leach? Or would we because of, maybe we would be because we're going to need the?
Yeah, I think we're going to need the technology to be able to present that to the public and, you know, as we see most members of council are able to attend, we can even make arrangements somehow for all members if, if need be. So with proper social distancing.
Okay.
Yeah. So stay here. I'd rather stay here.
Stay here and have a bagged lunch. I will say through our interview meetings, they just arranged for a very good lunch that Council Row suggested. It was from Subway and it just was one that none of the rest of us had had, but we all enjoyed it. So that, that worked out quite well and we just ate as we continued, you know, we had a little break and ate and, and carried on. Okay. So I guess we need a motion to move into closed session.
There was, there was a time actually?
Did we, are we going to start and say at 10:30? Okay. Start at 10:30 and try and get it done in that day. And if we can't, then we have December the 7th too.
Sally?
Yes, Karen?
Um, I am not available between 1:00 and 4:00 on the 30th. I emailed Dawn. He's probably not got it yet.
Okay. Yeah, that would, well, you, no, you're not available from 1:00 to 4:00, you said, Karen?
Yes, yes.
If we started at, say, 10:15, what time would you have to leave to get?
20 to 1.
Okay.
My, yeah, 20 to 1.
That would give you two and a half hours.
Okay.
If we could do that much and then we could maybe finalize it on December the 7th if we needed to.
It's just, I may be a few minutes late, because I'll just be coming from?
St. Thomas.
St. Thomas. So in the time it'll take me to get from there.
Well, I'm in St. Thomas. My appointment's there as well, so, but I should be done at about 10 to 10. We'll do our best. We'll try to start at 10:15 and you get here as quickly as you can. And that'll then give Karen at least two and a half hours to be involved.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into closed session. Would you?